Like to call the planning commission meeting of June 3, 2023 at 6:00 PM. Myself is here.
Shaila Williamson.
Hey, Walter.
Tony Fireman.
Brenda Ford.
Dan Vanoss.
Josh.
And the place where you are in this thing, Lane Belter. The minutes from May 4. Yeah, I should like make motion for a couple of events for May 4.
Shaila, I just have a second.
On favor.
Hi.
Pose. Here is. New business discussion, possible recommendation, extra territorial CSM review, 200th Avenue. Any information on this?
Doug, the Dollar, I believe, here with that, he's on the link.
Hey Doug, I think you're still muted if you're here.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. How's it going, Doug?
Good.
Thank you for joining us.
Do you have anything to say about the ETB review?
Um. I can. It's, it's, um. Pretty straightforward. It's, um, just two lots. One lot is seventeen point nine acres. The other one is almost thirty acres. And, I mean, other than that, it's, like I say, it's pretty straightforward. Existing buildings on Lot 3 that are owned by Roger Newman, and then he's gonna convey uh, to Kuz Lot 2. This has been approved by the town and by the county.
Doug, can you give us a little background about what, uh, what this is? It's like some kind of sports complex field?
No.
No?
That's not that. We're still on this.
Uh, yeah, no, this is, this is just the land division. Creating the lots 2 and 3.
That doesn't interfere with any future expansions, though? Yeah, no, it's outside our picture, my news. Um, I don't know if there's a lot in this guy, I'll make a motion to recommend the approval of the extra territorial CSM review for 200 Avenue. Jeff, thanks, I wish.
Okay. On favor?
Hi.
Pose. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Discussion and site plan and concept of the sports complex.
So this is kind of before the plan question, just first thing going along with the nation. Some feedback, ask some questions of gentlemen are here today that are planning this, so they can give a little overview where we've been and where we're at today.
Yeah, can one of you guys kind of?
Yep, my name's Kurt Preier. Who's here in Somerset, 2004, level, like T-Bone, it's area. Uh, so we're looking at building a sports complex. We started out with a building four hundred by four hundred foot. It'd be indoor baseball field, indoor football field. Six best, four basketball courts, pickleball courts, volleyball courts, elite training center. Music department in the dance. Uh, we are working with a consultant out of Milwaukee that has one just like this up and running. Working in him, pretty much using his building design. We did our feasibility report. He has about eight hundred thousand people here coming into his complex. He's the third highest in the state of Wisconsin. Behind the Packers and the Brewers. We did our feasibility. We're gonna have right now about three fifty to four hundred thousand a year from the sports complex facility. Not including the outdoor field that we put, or like the.
Like dome style or?
No, no.
Oh. Metal.
Instant.
Interesting, and then would you be looking, because right now that's all township, correct? So you'd be looking to annex? So we do like, do you guys already own the property?
I guess.
So try to do like a simultaneous close to annexing and and, um, close on the property, is that kind of what?
Yeah.
It would have, it's not simultaneous because we don't handle the actual closing. But as long as we if we can approve it. Intingent upon the sale. But okay, it was, it won't happen until, unless the sale happens, I think is how long it would. Explain to me exactly where this is in the unit?
It was running longer property line, the the west property.
Only what I?
Yeah, west property line of the amphitheater.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Peterson property or Peterson property, yeah.
Definitely, so.
Our person love the idea, so.
Yeah, yeah, can't imagine there's any downfall, and don't fault any.
No hockey?
No, I can, no water sports.
Um.
Highly advised.
And the school is not involved in that.
Who would your clientele be? Who would your, like, clientele be, or your, like, club stuff?
We're gonna have our own teams there. It's gonna be just like AU programs. So we're gonna draw in events and tournaments from all over cities, country, Midwest.
Or club teams, basically. And to offer dance classes? You said there's a dance studio?
There will be a dance studio, correct.
Nice, okay.
And a music department.
Who's actually gonna own the property?
Yeah.
Who's gonna own the country? Who's gonna own the property? It's curious.
Either us or probably us.
The four of you?
Yep.
Okay, who's curious?
There are seven of us total.
Okay.
Russ and his wife, Todd, George, myself, my wife Rebecca, and Dan in this place, Jim and we're all local, just Russ's kid and my kid are doing a lot of traveling for football over the United States. We're like, why can't we have something like this here? Huge demand. I see the demand for it. Can bring a lot of, a lot of people into town. I always see it being good.
So the access, access points to the facility, you're like in County Road I and what's the other road?
Where are you?
County Road I, and we're gonna work, see if we can work with the owner of the amphitheater.
You mentioned the.
Cut a road in, so we come.
Always, you could still get across, but like, uh, uh, Rainey's property there, right? By the railroad tracks? Rainey and?
Is that, but I don't think that crossing is larger to handle. I think it's more of a driveway.
Yeah. Yeah.
And the road is never really easy to deal with.
Never.
But are you thinking you have an access north and south for two entrances, two exits, two?
That's our goal.
Yeah.
Try to keep traffic out of town, but yet in town, so.
Sure.
Hit downtown.
Who, uh, who will you guys be working with? Anybody local that, for like, um, CSM type stuff?
Um, well, it's gonna go over bad. There's a fair amount of three pipe bitters, we don't have a mayor like it, so.
Well, like Chuck Schwartz is up there with MSA, and we went to Doug Zoller with Off Consulting. The local guys, they know all the regulations, they like on business their way or whatever, but if you want it done right, we do it with somebody that's pretty familiar with how things go around here.
You seeing probably services to the site?
And a couple of challenges that we have to work through. But access is one.
Doesn't, doesn't appear at this point.
What's the other one?
Utilities and access.
Okay.
Um, other than that. Uh, we looked at some other properties in town, um, with a lot of challenges and stormwater, stormwater commands, just because it's a lot of them previous, so it pushed away from the site. We had another parcel of land that, um, we weren't, they weren't successful on, um, acquiring.
So right now utilities probably don't go through any part of that, that were, the old 360 acres there?
An exhibit, sure, yeah. That's, that's nearest utilities on the sheet here.
That's a green. Oh, I got you.
That's, um, private. It's not. City, it's map, because there's always those things that, you know, in all of
So would it?
So essentially going from the meadows for water and then sewer would go down County Road I. And water, we would struggle to just loop it into um, Spring Street as well, so we have some circulation, but that can be phased in a different time, doesn't need to be immediate.
So gone through the green line going kind of behind the, like, the stage and stuff is, is that?
It's private.
Right, that's. But is, what, what is that? Is that watering?
Sewer lines or sewer.
And the water is blue?
Yeah.
So everything would have to go kind of around it, not through it. How does it go for, like, future development? Because everything else for the West is township right now, right? And probably not ever going to get annexed. Possibly.
Who's to say? Yeah, I mean, if the services aren't, at that point, it's easier for the next developer to come in and.
That's true. You don't have that.
Yeah, what?
In the center of the area. Uh-huh. The one this, the amphitheater.
Correct.
And where they've been, like, do you?
Nope.
No, oh, this deal, so way up. Where's forwards and all this?
That's somewhere near where they're.
Forwards are right behind the amphitheater. Used to, is that this property though?
Correct.
Okay, so it's kind of back off of boards.
So this would actually create somewhat of a buffer from the concert most times. So there's, it's, this is guided towards residential and our future land use. We've had housing developers look at this in the past. Um, and the concert side of.
No golden, I wouldn't want it. Which I don't think matters, but then. No, I wouldn't. I'd be good.
So of that seventy-two or so acres, how many would you guys use for, like, commercial area? And how much would still be living there, like agriculture?
Building will be four hundred by four hundred. Parking lot right now, I have to start a little smaller and do it phases, then it's gonna get up to seven hundred hard park. Outdoor field, maybe four baseball fields, which will incorporate three football, you, two football fields, two soccer fields and three football fields.
Yeah.
That's a little over a mile, or eight a mile square, this whole fields, so I, we're planning taking up for sure to forty.
Bob, can you explain again how the utilities would go down, used to down Spring Street?
So we're going in that direction, yes. That's the most logical. Water would come presumably from the metal lane area where, where it starts on the bottom of the sheet.
And then, so like, the village were responsible for getting it to them, and or how does that work out?
Um, that's gonna be a discussion.
Let's have that discussion. So these guys know in that way, we kind of know how, what does that look like?
Right, um, village choose.
I'll be honest, I'm new to this, so I'm, I'm asking questions, but I have no idea.
If the village is interested in putting this into a tin, um, they can own the property, um, if it wants to control the property, they, they can choose to do that. Um, there's a lot of, a lot of things to get through, um, obviously, but they're at the point now where they're trying to site a building, um, I said it's probably good. There's some communities that do not want these types of facilities anywhere.
Why?
Traffic mainly generates traffic.
What else?
That's probably the biggest, um, the biggest reason, and I don't know if anyone, our size that has been approached by something like this, but there are communities that, that are interested in it. River Falls, for instance, wasn't interested.
Yeah, in a college.
Right, so they're, they're not needy for space.
Yeah, that's the same name of college, so that.
And you get the high density metro areas. These exist, but then some communities are, like, we, we were covered with, through by MCAs or or whatever, some of these abilities might not come back favorable.
Where we just don't have any of that, so.
And we're gonna crush on, um, baseball fields, gym time. Yeah, maybe. There's a lot of, lot of demand, there's a lot of demand from.
I think this is a great idea, especially for our, our village.
I love the idea, just wonder what is it gonna cost you guys and us for utilities to get out there? Is that, so we put in a tin district? Is there a tin district over there right now? Let's, no, no.
No, um, that'd be under consideration and then, um, that, that game goes for the buck fours and, and so if we did in fact want to put this into a tax increment district. Tax increment finance, and then it's, you know, is an option then, so if they can't make ends meet, the bench could come and do a proper frame of partnership of which was, there's value there. That mechanism then would depend, depend on their, their about valuation of the property, their property. However, if that were to go in, then the support services would be in high demand for getting, you know, a restaurant, bar, girl, whatever, or parents to go to, and that would probably.
Yeah.
Tournaments.
Yeah.
They didn't mention.
Wasn't there somebody talking about doing one over there anyway a while ago, or something?
On top of that.
Yeah, yeah. This could maybe draw that back.
Doug, can you weigh in as well?
Uh, certainly. Good evening, everybody. Uh, I do think it provides that nice transition between the amphitheater and then, you know, growth to the West there. Uh, yeah, I mean, the devil's in the details. There's a lot of phasing that'll need to go on and, you know, how that all happens and how to get utilities. So there's a lot of work to be done, but you know, I do see it as, you know, a net positive all around for, you know, Somerset if this, you know, can be accomplished. I mean, that, that concept shows a lot of parking, but, uh, you know, is all that parking needed, or, you know, it's right now, it's at the concept stage, and so I'm excited to see how this thing progresses. I don't know if you have any, um, specific questions for me, Mike?
No, it's, how can we make it happen and, and, uh, make it work for these guys and also not have the village go broke, or you know, because the tax increment district, so between from where the stuff is now and where it's going, there's not really a whole lot to tax, right? Unless we try to.
It wouldn't be their, their facility alone in the, from the beginning, you know, so they would, they would have to provide a lot of financials. They go into developers agreement, um, the financials were, they would be promissories, and then what happens is we look at what increment would be generated and the maximum um, expenditure that the village could have to assist on utility, what would excite improvements or whatnot. So really, it's a calculation on if it's gonna be a two million dollar building. There's, it will, it will go, so, um, it's not a two million dollar, that's higher than that significantly.
And that's a big building, four hundred by four hundred, right, Bob?
Yeah.
It's huge. If we're gonna trade against the waters or there.
It all depends. Oh, yeah. Depending on how you approach it and on your agreement.
Oh.
It would like.
It's not a given.
No, so the tip protects the general fund by taking and capturing the technical school, the public school, and the county's tax shares, we keep it, and we pay back ourselves, and.
So they paid us, we hold on to it.
Yep, so when they write their check out for taxes, we keep it. We don't give it to anybody else, like, you, our houses.
On our share.
It goes out.
Yeah, so.
Yes.
And so how long of a period is that?
Um, to, you know, you, you can want to make your money back as quick as possible. Um, twenty years uncertain, somewhere a little bit longer, so you do a twenty year calculation on it. The thing is, the whole purpose of tins is to create the economics and the, creating the economic development and growth, and then close that thing down as fast as possible, so we'll go to the schools and the county and the tech school.
You get well familiar with all this stuff and understand it.
That's good.
We've had, you know.
Multiple, multiple moons, we're about talking about this.
So with that being said, uh, so it's only a discussion item for us right now. So go to the next planning commission for some kind of approval. You guys will bring us some kind of site plan and.
Yeah, the thing, number one, it's, was the planning commissioner simple, or would they have said, no, you know what, they don't like you here, um, we're not interested.
Do we like it? I like it. I like that.
Maybe, but because they're spending money, and it's like, okay, now you're at the stage now where we've got the, the building footprint, and we've got the potential location. So then it's like, okay, now let's bring this before you, for any farther, and then we can continue the discussions on public, private partnerships, and all that looks, I'm pretty attentive there, and, um, there's just a lot of, a lot of, just kind of, you have to have a lot of um, exploratory things on their end that they need to do, so, you know, just the utility connections are gonna be a massive undertaking, just to, you know, engineer and have somebody draw that out, so.
The county and the township already gave the go ahead.
No, no, no. That was, that was the prior item.
Just sit on the mic.
That's a good struggle at Somerset, we do our own, you know, but county's only, but, um.
Twenty, twenty years ago, I was in the same place you guys were. I was petitioning the township to put some more soccer was getting to be big. Here's the deal, the soccer wants to use our baseball field. I'm coaching baseball. How about if you, you don't have a park? Two thirds of the kids on my baseball team for six, for, for ten years were from the township. I said, you don't have a field. But it, but you can, and you can see it, it didn't go anywhere, because the township still doesn't, well, we have, we have, uh, it's a park where you grow.
One spring.
One spring. I said, okay, go put a soccer field on there. I think it's a great park, right? Don't get me wrong. It's not, you can't put anything here.
We get, we have all sorts of discussion for reviewing County Road I and Spring Street will be done.
There's a lot of. Yeah, I think.
Basically, we're like, we won't be able to handle that. A lot of studying, a lot of things, uh, you know, a lot of rocks to be on turn there.
It's in the township right now, right?
Correct.
Yes, and we bring it into the city. Well, we would, they're wanting to make sure that we're on board.
Before they try to.
Before they, and then we give them the blessing to, to, that if they do purchase the property, that we will annex it into the village.
And Chuck thinks it's a.
Is there a?
I mean, it's our decision, he just, he just doesn't see any.
Probably.
Any problem.
Yeah.
Like Bob says, there are.
Challenges.
There are things to figure out.
But you can figure them out, you think?
I think so.
Probably, there's solutions, I have.
Yeah.
I would think a, a tin district would make sense from the standpoint that, you know, something like this, if we take the taxes away from the school district or technical college, we're not, we're not adding bodies to the school district per se. We've, we're adding this enhancement that will, you know, ultimately make the area more attractive to development and, and to provide more opportunity to their students, but we're not adding a huge chunk of students or what have you to, you know, that would, you know, over, you know, put pressure on the schools.
Most of it's agricultural land or forest, so they probably pay five hundred dollars a year in taxes or even now, and it's part of the township and not the village, but what is like the rough estimate, Chuck, for running like a foot of sewer line or a foot of water line, and then how many feet are we looking at of water line?
Three thousand, approximately, and water, forty to sixty dollars a foot.
Three thousand in water at fifty dollars a foot.
Yeah, with all the, the structures and everything else, it'll be, you know, quite a bit higher than that.
Then you got. Yeah. That's very conservative on one number. Oh, sure, that's just true.
They didn't like that number, Bob.
That's not the emergence.
And that was just the water line, and that's, uh, that is the one coming from Meadows, not Meadows, yeah, Meadows.
Yeah.
And the sewer line.
Yeah, I, I would guess a million, two million bucks. I mean, you, you know, it's. If it gets a vast thing.
Millions all the time, and that's a little much. It's, it's gonna be that much?
Well, you, you're probably gonna need a lift station, you know, you, you know, to get the, pump the sewer, you know, I don't know if you can rely on gravity to get it all the way there. You know, some of those things, and, you know, so things add up, I guess, so. But that's something that certainly could be looked at if, as we go through, you know, these next stages, um, refine what, you know, get better numbers for you.
How does it work? I know I've heard of like easements through other people's property, so what would be the chances, you said the green is sewer, right? What would be the chances of nothing giving some kind of an easement, is that, is that kind of a, an option at all?
Yeah, a lot of conversation, I think, has to be had, you know, want access, is the interest of improving that roadway going into the parking area. Um, how we feel about, um, losing all this camping to the, uh, that knob here? The back, back side by railroad. The back, back side by railroad tracks, you know. There could be some opportunities for that as well. Um, with improved access and that's facility going in, you know, obviously it's going to generate. Um, weekend activity all, all year round. So then your support services, if they're interested in putting those in, those feasibilities come back very, very well. They got concerts, you have the Christmas thing, you've got. Um, the sports complex, so there's gonna be a lot of need for support services, hotels, restaurants and whatnot. So.
It's a good thing.
And this side of town really needs.
Something.
It hasn't been, been anything new in a long time.
Who's on the backside of this? Right here in this area.
Bruce and Rainy Hatch.
I love it.
This side is.
No, it's coming from the north side.
That's Peter Jones.
Just having the stored water available to them is, you know, advantageous to them and. Would give them more. Reason to cooperate. What have you?
You're talking the concert site.
Yes.
Yeah, I would think so too. The more. Would be advantageous that in the long, in the short run, in the long run, I would think. To have a go across the property.
Coming from here, come from. Instead of it coming from the meadows.
So.
I'll just shut up now.
You basically.
It's gonna go right to your daughter.
I know.
What's the question?
We did have. Some features that he even has that after he kind of brought it up easily. He wants it in his, but.
Yeah.
We do have a lot more land to put outdoor fields.
Right, here was a type basically like fifteen, twenty acres at first.
Yeah.
Start.
Yep, but his, so he did purchase more. Land next to him for his parking lot and outdoor fields. He might put those in soon, correct? I mean, he's, he can be hosting softball grounds at our ESPN and. Wait, I missed the part of the conversation you were talking about. He asked if we were gonna replicate.
So if you look, if you, if you go on the website and, and look at. The building that they're basically mimicking, it's pretty, pretty cool looking site and they got everything set up really neat and a lot of advantageous things for. Group teams come in. So I can see the adult section, if you can draw out of East Metro and bring people over, I can see it'd be really successful. Um. You know, right now there's a lot of, in the youth category, you know, they're all tied up in these club teams. You know, and play all summer and all year round. You know, you'd have to capture that group to actually be supported too. And get them into rent the facility to use the field systems.
We did, we did upsize our base indoor baseball fields. We can host WIA tournaments. Not able to have that in here. We're trying to hit.
Yeah.
Trying to hit everything possible that we can, but into the future for this.
Yeah, so I, I just, just, just to give you one, one, one thought though. Is I, I know you said no hockey, but being that we have a small hockey program in town here that. Owns the, owns the rent themselves and they don't really get any community, community support for it. So it's a hundred player. Association that's supporting the hockey program. Um, I could see if you. Stay away from that area. This could be successful because that would, it'll take down that program.
Yeah, we're not, we're not gonna personally.
We're not attacking. No, we'll get spent on.
That like guarantee.
Yeah.
Hundred percent.
There's not gonna be.
Don't, 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 you know.
They're getting better, better all the time, but I'm just saying it's just, it's a small program and I can see.
Throw some.
You know, I'm not involved anymore, but.
I can see where we need.
So we, we've already talked about that is could you bring, you can bring in Max.
Yeah.
We've already talked about.
In the dance studio.
Now bringing in Matt's over the turf field and now we got a big area for wrestling tournaments. Uh, just to add also is, yeah, the main purpose is multi-sports, both sports. But we're also playing on doing a lot of community events. Posting in there too. So it's, it's, you know, not just sports, but we will be a, uh, community events and deeply that's. Very important too, to bring in the community to also be able to use it. Not just for sports.
Nice.
And I have an orthopedic section also sports.
This keeps getting better and better. Yeah.
So that's right there, they.
Engine right away. So websites.
All started.
Two is O A W N door. O A W and that's the one that.
We say it again.
O A W indoor, they can just Google it. It's a new town in Wisconsin.
Association, Wisconsin.
I mean, they, they have a bigger. Tighter population around that facility, but we do have East Metro. Which I can see that's gonna be your bigger draw. You know, as our communities get spread all a bit, that's hard.
That was all part of our feasibility.
Right.
For sure.
Our feasibility was low, but it's just because it didn't quite reach out to them areas and then they're.
It only did thirty mile radius, so it didn't quite capture. St. Paul, you know.
He told us if we go eleven miles going to Hudson, he goes, then it just, it opens up that much more. All right, we, we want to keep here in Somerset. Yeah, so.
Because you all live here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, what's it gonna do to your community?
Yeah, yeah.
I think you all have.
Yeah.
Have all of our support.
You do, yeah.
I mean, your concept is basically. It's the start of the first real anchor in our period.
I agree.
And. I mean. Sports or what? What a great anchor.
Yeah.
Well, everybody coming over from the city now too of this. I don't know what the reason is to it, be, be, be successful. You want to keep on moving all this area.
You know, more and more people move out of the metro and keep going far, far.
Or draw more. More athletes over this, they're just, not only for young guys, but they'll hold.
This is bad.
Last time Budson and I were down there, they had Irish dancing. He's got eight hundred parking spots and there was not one spot.
Yeah, it's really big.
Say Irish.
Yeah, it's huge. They're huge. Got it.
They're from all.
All right, so let's get her, let's get her going on the next, uh, planning commission member and hopefully it's a. Have something good that we can not just discuss, but hopefully we can approve some.
I think it's a very good idea.
Yeah.
And, uh, when I looked at the site down in Berlin, um, it's pretty cool.
I'm excited.
Impressive.
Yeah.
Awesome. All right. Thank you, guys. Uh, any chance you can, uh, share that feasibility study with us too?
Yeah, yeah. I'm gonna talk to our consultant.
Okay.
We pay for it.
We get it.
Yeah. No worries.
I just don't wanna, I've had stuff snatched from under me before.
Oh, 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 okay, yeah.
Share it over beers from some, sometime. Perfect. All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion, did six creation, um, closure of Tid for.
So we're aware, somebody who are in order now, so we've been working, I think, since two thousand and fifteen, nineteen. I don't want to be good for northern section. That's how to develop, um. At the point now, which is really, it's been signed by the board. For the land and we are in due diligence, um. Executives right now, um, one of those constituencies is can create a new tip tax increment this bit. To help alleviate some of the expenses that. Um, developers gotta.
Share your screen with it, because I.
I'm not, I'm not.
You're. Chuck, can you, uh, just chuck that in? Cause I, I think I know exactly what you're talking about, but I want to know, like, I saw the tax ID numbers. But I didn't think the village. Village only was part of that right now, right? Is what you're saying? And then we're looking to go north?
No, not north, south. We were trying to go north in that.
Do, do you want me to show the area?
Please.
Hold on, I think all that's just there.
This was, so.
Bring it away. But I think there might be some readers in there. I do. There are, I got two, one I'm holding my hair back and one, look at that. Oh, he's got readers. We've all got readers. All right. If you get some. Mine are three.
So the area in question. You know, is essentially. These lots right here. That's the current kid for.
And in the, in the village currently or, or not owns, but the village owns part of it and some of it's annexed or the village owns all of it.
Oh.
The village owns all of it. Is that the eighty acres, whatever?
Seventy four.
Seventy four acres.
Okay. So the shaded areas, the village limits right now. And so this is Ted four. So Ted six is just gonna have to, because of that. Bob alluded to the thirty five. Percent.
Do you think you have any there?
Well, we, we need to stay away from residential properties. Um, because it's a mixed use tax infrastructure. So. No more than thirty five percent of the land can be residential. So. We need to incorporate. Additional commercial. And industrial and which would. Be the southern part of the, the northern part of the industry. I said acquiring some land there. Closing to four is gonna free up about four million dollars and open back to our. Our, our tax authorities back to the schools and back to Kelly. Um, and recreating six, there's minimum value that we would offer in exchange. So it's a. It's a good, good position to be in. Um. The area.
Do you put that back on, Chuck?
Oh, my apologies.
Yeah, that looks way better than you.
You have the top layer on this map with the pink in. Yep, that looks like a Tetris thing. That's tip four. Yep, and then a little bit of the purple on the south is also tip four. That's where the buildings are. That's where our valuation is coming.
That's where the new building is going in or something or.
Free. Well, it's a Tetris. Back in the eighties.
It ended up maybe yes.
Dating her.
The, um. From what I remember hearing about this land, we got it, it's, you know, seventy two or whatever acres, but it's. Not super usable and.
Smallness.
Not, yeah, not really valuable right now. People use the.
Put in the commercial and. And those go lots. The village would not make money on it. They would. They would incur debt that we would have to find a different mechanism to pay for. Based off the engineers' estimates. Because of the site clearing. And, um, some of the wetlands that are in there can cost to develop more higher, so.
It's just too much topography for, I mean, it makes beautiful homes, but it doesn't make. Good flat lands for commercial.
We sell it back to the township.
We invite.
We invite them.
It's just ourselves. It actually. It's sold. Right?
Only like six acres or something, so, right?
That's.
It's fun.
There's a person.
What, what, but it.
Homes here.
Yeah, to clarify, it's currently called good form.
Correct.
So we want to end it for, yes, so that we can.
Redraw.
Redraw. So they can.
Hit that.
If that, but it can be used for all. Residential.
Um.
That makes sense.
That's, that's.
Yeah, that makes sense.
What I thought was happening, I just wanted to make sure. Because currently we can't sell it as all residential in ten four.
Right.
That.
That makes a lot more sense.
Because you're taking up a hundred percent of the bad, the land value with residential.
Sure, okay. Thanks, Dan. Well. Good job. All right.
Right, so, but that's only discussion.
Yeah, it's just updating you that the joint reward will be meeting on the twenty eighth. So. Twenty nine, sorry.
Twenty nine.
Twenty nine. Um, so that was the, the question that was posed, do we move by commission? I said some of the individuals sitting in the room have a joint review board. Uh, so. And then we had in the past had some, uh, still those, give it a call on the fourth of July. Mm-hmm, that every year, like Dan said, it depends, so.
What's the twenty ninth? What day of the week?
Thursday.
Thursday, still, it's a previous Thursday.
So. Well, that's all. I don't know if I am. Um, what time is this at?
Let's see the corner.
Uh, okay. No, we're just worried about, I don't want to pass, you know, I'd be there. Yeah.
So I.
I'll make it work.
Yeah, I'll be here.
I'll be there.
As we're going in town.
All right. Start with that. Yeah, yeah. Gotcha.
As, as the cat, I'm assuming the capstone guys have walked that side. Or I'm assuming the guys from Capstone have walked. They're shopping across the street, so you want them.
That's long, soon.
Yeah.
That's H R, that's H R, whatever the name is.
It went.
Yeah.
Preferred.
That's not capital.
That's preferred. That's not. Oh, H R, yeah.
So they were there, how's he? Uh, what's the name of there? I thought it was capital.
Uh-uh, that's all preferred.
Get old. It way. H H R nation.
It where, yeah.
Mm-hmm. All right.
Not.
So nice. What consensus is tomorrow's meeting? June twenty ninth, overtime, six thirty, okay, six thirty, number twenty nine. Sure.
I mean, the site could make. Beautiful home sites. A really interesting development.
Will make.
Will.
Say again, we'll be making.
It's already, yeah, right?
It's.
They're gonna be good, yeah, yeah, they're gonna be great.
And because it's a new concept, you can have some kind of. They are like lot sizes and all that stuff.
Yeah, um, lots need to be. There needs to be three lots, is it three lots per acre, Chuck? Twelve thousand square feet. Which their concept right now is showing that they have to go back and tweak some things because they had some wetlands, um. And some of those. Things don't work out, so it might change a little bit, but preliminary plan is where kind of the. Lots of bolts come in on this. Um, I met with Matt for about a half an hour today from Capstone. We want to talk through the schedule and everything, so. They like to get going this fall, but I don't feel that they're gonna have everything ready.
Hmm.
Um, the biggest concern right now is trees. Trees with leaves on them, um, to do lighter and, um. And, you know, it costs. Contact charge more for trees with leaves.
About, uh, utilities, I'm sure they're not out there yet, but close.
Ready to put them in.
They'll put them in.
So that, Joe, can we get out to thirty five?
No.
Oh.
No, so we one in, one out. For now.
Yep.
We don't own the very. Right.
That's a big part. Yeah.
The, the village currently doesn't know, the end of the Tetris would have died.
Who, who's at the end of the Tetris there?
Uh, one of those people we bought from.
Next door.
Yeah.
Next door.
It's all.
Excellent.
The point in.
Yeah, the reason it's a residential, it was commercial.
And then it's the Newman farm to the north.
There's some negotiation there, but. And over.
And then to the east. To the east of Chris Marshall. To the east of Chris Marshall.
Was Wiki's property prior, now it's the trust.
Before we adjourn, I do have a correction on. Just before we adjourn on the minute of May fourth.
Great.
Well, you can.
No, I just, I just, I just wanted to adjourn before.
Why don't you do that now and just move on after that? Because the plan review is, we're not, we're skipping that, right?
Yeah, you're, you're, that's.
Next month or something.
Yep, so review that, the, the public participation. These events, that's all explained.
Yeah.
Are your attachments as well?
Go ahead, Neil.
I, I can give you a little bit of an update too, so we are gonna bring up public participation plan in front of the. The village board at your next meeting here, and basically it's just recapping what you've already agreed to with the, the Streeter and our contract. Amendment, everything else, so that'll just formalize it, uh, you know, formalize it because of the new smart glow growth law, you have to. Through resolution, say this is what we're doing, so it's just reiterating what you've already agreed to. And then next month, uh, you'll tackle, we'll present two of the, the sections, the. Ag and cultural resources as well as transportation, as well as give you an update on the public input summary, so that, that'll happen next month and. Uh, next month will happen, sounds like June twenty ninth.
I'm.
Uh, the minutes of May fourth, uh, your new business. I didn't quite give the number seven before we voted on it, but existing house, if not to be used as a residence. What I said on May fourth of the existing house was not to be used as a rental. So.
I can't rent it out.
Oh, you can, words matter.
Yeah, it's a rental.
Yeah.
If Steve wants to move in there, his mom wants to move in there, the owners of the property, I have no problem with that. But what I want, what I wanted, they didn't want rental property.
Yeah, you did say rental. You hit it, yeah.
Find the way.
Need to make a motion or?
It's not on the agenda, so we can, but.
No, no, it wasn't, it wasn't, he's just.
Yes.
Yeah, but the permit has already been, if that was named them.
Those structure was clear for here.
Yeah.
Are you able to?
The board approved it from the consent that by the plan commission.
I don't think it's, I think Steve heard that, but I don't, it's not worth a whole bunch of extra work to fix it, because I think Steve understood that.
Yeah, it was commercial, residential anymore, that's the way.
Renting a property to someone that's got a.
Hmm.
Commercial business going on right now. That was my point.
I'll see what I can do.
Okay.
I'll see what I can do.
Okay, I, I always, I don't think it's a big deal, because.
Right, and then we're moving the July meeting to June twenty ninth on favor.
Nice, discussion.
Because the only, the, the next cool thing is.
Make a motion to adjourn.
For a second.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Votes? Good job, easy hands that.
Good job, Tim.